All right, welcome to the regular meeting of the city council needles utility authority of the city of needles california Tuesday June twenty second two thousand twenty one executive session is at five o'clock please we're gonna call us being to order would you take the role?
Campbell?
Present.
Carol?
Good luck.
Merritt?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Padgett?
Belk?
Here.
Longacre?
Here.
All right, we're going to recess the city council meeting convenient joint council and MPA meeting. Is there any public comments pertaining to executive session? Seeing and hearing none will move on to executive session items or choose items the MPA council will discuss conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D one one case real winner Vista Association at all versus city needles case number is CI VSB two oh two eight four three nine and the second item is the council matter conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or designee negotiating parties are the city of needles as a potential seller and Charles Dressler or Adrian Bravo has a potential buyer of the property described as point one acres point one eight acres vacant parcel located on the southeast corner of Clary Drive and La Sima Road APN zero one eight five dash three five one dash two eight dash zero 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 under negotiation their price and terms with that we will go into executive session. Welcome to the regular meeting of the city council of city of needles California needles public utility authority for Tuesday June twenty second. Is there a report out of executive session John?
Yes, the council met in closed session item A was a meeting with the NPU and council regarding a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D one that involved one case the Rio Buena Vista Association matter versus the city of needles case number CI VSB two zero two eight four three nine there was no reportable action on that item. Item B was a meeting with the council conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight agency negotiator city manager Rick Daniels or his designee negotiating parties city of needles as potential seller and Charles Dressler or Adrian Bravo's potential buyer of the property described as a point one eight acre vacant parcel generally located at the southeast corner of Clary Drive and La Sima Road APN zero one eight five three five one two eight zero 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 under negotiation were priced in terms there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you and with that we'll adjourn the city council and MPA meeting the joint meeting and reconvene the city council meeting we'll call it to order and will please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance roll calls priorly prior been taken.
Please join with me in the invocation our father in heaven bless this town and its citizens guide this council and city staff in their judgments and deliberations and bless those who've traveled these desert highways to come to our crown jewel in the desert in God's name we pray amen.
Ready begin.
I might let the beacons of the United States of America and the United Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda? Make your motion.
Motion second.
I'll second it. Call for the vote.
We have all eyes your honor Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Merritt? Yes.
Padgett? Yes.
Belk? Yes.
And Longacre?
Yes.
Are there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none any correspondence? Introduction to the city attorney will skip that for now as a courtesy of those in attendance we'd ask you set your cell phones to their silent mode please. First item on the agenda is presentation by deputy foreman Adam Panos and assistant fire marshals Tom Strong and Brian Headley will be presenting a PowerPoint presentation regarding GIS based community risk reduction applications.
Good evening mayor and council. My name's Adam Panos with the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District I'm here on behalf of my fire marshal Mike Horton and of course the department as well and we it's nice to be back in front of you I know I saw you about a year ago. So what we have tonight is a presentation that we hope you on you'll enjoy. It's regarding community risk reduction and some of the things that we're doing using technology to better improve the safety of the residents of the city of needles as well as those throughout our county. So the term community risk reduction you may not be familiar with. It's a process to identify and prioritize the risks here locally in our community and invest strategically our resources in order to reduce the impact. So basically what it means is we gather information on what's the biggest risks what are the biggest problems in the community? And we use what resources we have which are limited in order to achieve that impact and reduce those risks. The important thing about community risk reduction is it is data driven without the information and collecting the data we really don't know you know where to go next so we have a process for collecting that data and then of course we deploy our resources after that. We use graphic information systems or GIS in order to collect our data it's a geospatial in other words points on a map. We use the Esri product. And in the future right now we're just plotting data points but in the future we hope to do more analytics to predict and forecast trends in order to further reduce impacts and reduce risks. And of course we have an an already existing license agreement and we're adding more and more users onto those licenses in order to get everyone all eyes on the road when it comes to identifying and collecting data. So I have two subject matter experts with me they're two assistant fire marshals and I'm going to introduce them and then I'm going to come back at the end and take any questions that you have so first gentleman I like to introduce is assistant fire marshal Tom Strong and he's going to talk a little bit more about this technology and GIS that we have.
Thank you Adam.
Good evening mayor council members and city staff I'll be giving you a brief overview of three of our current sorry I'm used to people pushing my button there so that didn't sound right anyways. I'll be giving you a brief overview of three of our current applications we have developed our damage assessment app our vacant building app on our online fireworks reporting app. The damage assessment app was developed about two and a half years ago. It's an all risk collector prior to the use of the application the methodology included a mixture of paper and electronics so we would go out into the field with APN maps that we would retrieve from the assessor's office try to figure out our exact location and that wasn't always an easy task now we're pulling the data directly from the assessor's office on the iPads or the iPhones and our officers out in the field know their exact location as it's being cleaned the new application. The new applicant the new application conducts damage assessment surveys digitally using mobile devices. It has also standardized the collection process the property owner information as I had stated is transferred directly from the assessor's office and it provides a real time dashboard a scene on the slide. Our vacant building app reporter was actually tested here in needles and was used for the first time here in needles and after that we made a few changes and put it into service and it's now being used in all of the areas that we have authority over within the county. It was completed and released a few months back the vacant building possesses a greater risk to loss due to fire water damage theft and vandalism. The application allows fire prevention staff to conduct surveys digitally using mobile devices. The survey of these vacant buildings gives the fire department and our cooperating agencies and cities the ability to know the location of these properties including photos property owner information a real time dashboard as you can see on the slide presented to you. The online firework reporting app first came in to use again this year on first of two thousand twenty one the updated version was released to the public. The reporter can be accessed using the QR code or by going to sbcfire.org and clicking on report illegal fireworks. The simple online survey allows citizens the opportunity to report the illegal use or cells of fireworks twenty four hours a day seven days a week with an option of staying anonymous. The data collected is used for those areas receiving the highest number of complaints so when our staff is out in the field or suppression staff or law enforcement we can share all that information and that tells those officers where the highest area for the complaints were coming in. The dashboard view can be accessed from going to sbcfire.org as well and that is a public view and it's a real time dashboard with a heat map that allows citizens to see the areas receiving the highest complaints. So that big bright yellow spot on that heat map currently up there is the San Bernardino city area and up above that would be the Adelanto Victorville area to date I have not received one complaint in your city as of yet.
Yeah what's your address?
This is for fireworks was the last one?
That would be for fireworks yes. Illegal correct you guys have safe insane here in the city but any of the aerials or any of the ones that make the loud bangs and scoot across the ground and all of that those would be the ones that you could report or illegal cells as well.
Come back in two weeks.
I don't think we probably even need to wait two weeks I think we're getting close enough now it's really getting crazy out there I've received since April first we've received a little over a thousand reports already on the reporter. Multiple reports of cells have come in as well. The field officer dashboard is what we're looking at now that is the dashboard that my officers have the ability to use in the field they can zoom right in on each one of those yellow dots it'll actually show through a satellite view what that property looks like they can touch on that yellow geo coded dot and it'll pull up all the information up to including a video or a picture that the person included with the report to us. Last year in the city of Fontana we received a report of illegal cells all illegal cells when they do come in immediately go over to our investigation unit and our investigators work with local law enforcement to get the process going and hopefully up to some type of a outcome the one here in the city of Fontana last year required the city of Fontana and they were able to go in and actually cite the two people and recover a large quantity of fireworks that were being stored in. Two thousand twenty statistics when the fire reporter app was online I only had it up for three months or three weeks prior to the fourth of July in that three week timeframe we was we received two thousand and forty eight complaints one thousand two hundred and sixty eight of those were actually in the jurisdiction of San Bernardino County Fire seven hundred and eighty were outside of our jurisdiction any of those that are outside of our jurisdiction such as Rancho Rialto or any of the other cities I do process those over and give those to the local jurisdictions as well. Out of those two thousand and forty eight complaints that we received one of the questions on there is if you've contacted nine one one out of those eighty two percent of the people chose to use the online reporter app instead of calling nine one one which does free up the lines for a true more emergency a medical aid a fire or something along those lines. The strain on the resources this is a four year here as you can see from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty the amount of the fireworks seized and the number of citations issued steadily continues to grow. We've yet to see that plateau or the drop. And at that point I'll turn it over to Brian Headley assistant fire marshal.
Thank you.
Hello everyone I'm Brian Headley assistant fire marshal in charge of the investigations. Have to find the right button there we go I'm just going to give you a snapshot view of our investigation unit tonight. As you can see our unit is comprised of six post qualified former suppression personnel that are trained in fire behavior they're also state of California certified fire investigators. All our investigations are performed per NFPA nine twenty one standards for completing systematic and safe investigations. We're on track this year for a thousand investigations with six people to cover the nineteen thousand square miles which includes the city needles. You're kind of far out here but we make it. We work with the local law enforcement the sheriff's department when we do come into town and as you can see the last thing on the list down there is our newest investigator number seven his name is Dinty. Our investigation canine he's been in service since May first our handler Sean Reese went to New Hampshire for a month and trained with the dog lived with the dog and now the dog lives with him and he's in service not only for our jurisdictions but for neighboring jurisdictions also. Tom talked a little bit about interdiction. What we normally do is set up on the I fifteen corridor and sometimes the I forty out here at the agricultural check stations. Last year we set up for seven days we issued two hundred and twenty one citations generated two hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars in fines and seized forty five thousand pounds of fireworks and that was seven weekend days not counting Father's Day in the month of June last year. Currently this year we set up for ten days we've issued ninety seven citations you have to do the math at twelve hundred and fifty dollars a citation and then we've seized about twenty thousand pounds already this year. You see a little bit of decrease Tom I talked about we haven't seen a plateau yet but you can see that it for ten days this year it is a little bit less coming into the county. Earlier this year we also seized fifty five hundred pounds coming into needles through your ag check station we confiscated that those persons were arrested and we dispose of all those fireworks to CAL FIRE the state takes them from us. Couple things we have in development no contact administrative citations all those citations that we issue are administrative they're not criminal. It comes with a twelve hundred and fifty dollar fine as I said and you have to pay it you can fight it but to fight it you have to pay it and you have to pay it within ten days usually people pay it and we see a couple of them but not many people fight it because they know they're wrong bringing fireworks into the county. Another map with Tom's group that we developed was illegal marijuana grows in the what did I push? Can someone fix it? Thank you. Out in our there's some of our desert areas we have some illegal marijuana grows in the Lucerne Valley area. We mapped all those out in conjunction with the sheriff's department because our our engines were going out to illegal burns at night and they were being met by armed persons at these locations. So now we have a map that shows that they're not allowed to respond into these areas without law enforcement or investigator with them. We also have an arson map which will show you that plots all our fires that we respond to it also plots our juvenile fire centers and it plots our arson registrants in conjunction with those fires. On the no contact administrative citations this is a program that's still in development it's ready to go for this year it's currently in county council Adam can answer any questions and where that's at. What it does instead of our prevention officers out on patrols on fourth of July making contact with people that have been barbecuing all day and they're not really fun to deal with. We could pull up in front of a house with your iPad that Tom described touch the map it locates where you are it pre fills all the PIMS owner property owner information couple other dropdowns as to what it is and it sends the property owner a twelve hundred and fifty dollar citation. There's a couple of things that have to be overcome with county council about noticing and things like that but it's still in the works and if we can get it up and running here before the first it would be great for us to be able to do this we found that in our ordinance the property owner is the ultimate responsibility for things that are going on on their property even if it's tenant occupied. Here's our arson map it's another one of Tom's group's maps we go in and we map all our fires that we respond to that thousand fires I spoke of we can see a pattern of fires maybe around an arson registrants house maybe around a juvenile fire center maybe just a pattern of fires in a certain area that we don't even know who's in that area. This is a great tool rather than pens and paper like we used to do it because an investigator will go out and he might go off shift and next guy that comes on next day has another fire in that area and he won't know about it till that other person comes back on duty. So now they have this instant information when they get into that area that they can see all the fires that happened in that period of time. And I'll turn it back over to Adam for any questions thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Tom and Brian. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
My question is just like the television news report your charts don't show needles. And we'd like to see next time you present of our local chart include the city of needles on these charts.
Would that be for the administrative citations and the fireworks seized and all that?
Arson mapping and all.
Oh okay yeah those charts really all the data that we collect we do break it down by areas when we do the presentations we lumped it all together because we're doing these presentations to all our cities and cooperators.
But it's the same thing it's the same thing with the weathermen you know they never show the needles whether when you watch the Los Angeles county.
Right no I understand we can provide that to you. Yes sir.
He was saying that it would cite the homeowner even if his tenant occupied what is the recourse of the of the homeowner versus the tenant? Okay. What is the home resource of the homeowner versus the tenant if the if the homeowner cited because obviously you were saying he has to pay period but what is the recourse past that?
Right so legally the homeowner has to be made aware that something illegal is occurring on the property. And that's the I don't want to say it's a hitch but that's the extra step that we have to do in order for us to be able to send a what we call a no contact citation. So as Brian mentioned we're still you know kind of getting together a plan of action for that and it's still in legal review. So right now the potential or I should say the plan of operation that we have that we'd like to that we'd like to explore a little further is if we get these fireworks reports on the app then we would patrol that area and confirm or we could actually send them a letter separately that you know you know informs the homeowner that they're doing something illegal is occurring on the property it could be the homeowner or it could be a tenant. Once you put them on notice they have a certain number of days to correct it when we cruise out there again on patrol and we see that activity then we could take some photos gather whatever evidence it could be stuff on the ground stuff in the something shooting down the backyard whatever we have then that's enough evidence we have and we can actually send the owner a citation. So I guess to answer your question what if we do all that the owner doesn't have a recourse but we don't want to do that without telling the citing you know having the tenant do it when actually the owner doesn't even know what's occurring.
That was basically my question.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Yes sir.
And the two hundred and seventy thousand seventy seven thousand dollars of fines you've collected how much does the city get of that?
Well it goes to fund the cost of our operation. Yeah.
So we don't get any?
You get the service you get the service we only collect about fifty to sixty percent of that money. The rest of it goes to collections and they attach their tax return and so forth but we don't we don't see all of it but we it does fund the interdiction operation that we do and our patrols and everything right.
How does the public find out more about this like I mean have you guys been advertising this to the public because I didn't know about it until I read the thing earlier today so that's probably why you don't have a lot of reports from different places so I mean is it more well known down in San Bernardino how to what's the advertising about all this?
Yeah it tends to be more well known because it's just you know you know a very metropolitan area. We've done some presentations at neighborhood meetings and so forth and kind of gotten the word out there's a lot of interest groups that are against illegal fireworks. We're willing to hear you out and whatever the need is here in the city we do a lot of social media stuff because that really gets very far very fast. The social media stuff the there's information on our website. We can do press releases or we have done press releases and those can be aired in all different kinds of areas and they were aired on national TV on major networks. We can also you know do a press release for the the local newspapers here so we've done that we have a public information officers office that can put that together so whatever you know whatever the need that you think there is then we can we can put more information out.
Ask question?
Yes ma'am.
What exactly is a damage assessment two thousand twenty NACO recipient?
So yeah so the damage assessment is after there's a major disaster it could be a fire but we've also done floods earthquakes we've even done civil unrest after the damage is done where you know there's an organized incident with multi agency we go out there are we mobilize a damage assessment team Tom Strong actually leads that team of trained experts we go in there and we assess the damage of different properties where the location where the damages occurred the percentage of damage we compile all that information we use the GIS maps now and then we get sent to FEMA and we also share it with other agencies. The the app the survey one two three app mobile app that Esri makes the way that that was configured and implemented by county fire that was submitted to the National Association of Counties NACO and it actually won an award for the innovative use of technology in in the damage assessment Tom if you if you want to add anything to that.
The NACO award you apply for it and it's the National Association of Counties is adamant stated so there's different categories that you can win awards in so the NACO award was issued to us last year for the damage assessment app as being a brand new developed something that had never been developed before I guess for lack of a better term so we actually won the NACO award for that last year in IT which was innovation technologies. This year we just were notified a week and a half or two weeks ago that the fireworks reporter app we received an equal award for two thousand twenty one in that for criminal justice criminal justice and public safety so the last two years we've been able to collect NACO awards as well on a lot of the technology and the development that we're doing within our department.
Does this give financial data also on how much damages of for cost or just about the actual structures?
So when when my teams go out into the field they stand in front of a property and they say whether it's a house or an outbuilding or whatever the case may be. If it's your home whatever data that the assessor office has on file is the data that it pulls over and then that's the information that we report starting with our office of emergency services then they decide whether there's declarations that can made within the county itself is a declared disaster state level federal level so yes all of that data is being pulled in and it does everything right out of the PIM system so it's made it a lot easier for us.
That will be part of we'll be actually a member of that then we could see that on ours through our city.
So if you were to have a major disaster out here whatever it may be you know we've done everything from civil unrest to you know storm damage to you know brush fires if that was the case and we were out here you guys would be able to see a dashboard and set up the city and it's not a live dashboard because in order for us to release certain information that has to go through RICs first the incident commanders and approved for release but once a day that map would be updated for you guys and you would have the ability to view it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Great name for a fireman by the way.
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Ellen. This form that when you I was looking at this there was a QR code in the presentation it's not in our paperwork is this form if someone wants to is it an app that people can go into to report fireworks or do they actually just have to log into their computer go to an Earl find this form and then submit it?
Yes the short answer is yes it's a it's an online form it uses survey one two three which is an Esri product but it's it's like an online form that you would you know fill out you know for the DMV or something like that but it's specifically tailored to ask a few questions and check a few boxes. But it's specifically tailored to ask a few questions and check a few boxes and type in a few fields on what you're reporting. You know, was it, whether it was not, was it illegal fireworks, whether or not you called 911? Is there, you know, what the name address is. You can report anonymously or you can provide your name. Once you get to the bottom of the form, you hit submit, you can attach photos, by the way, should have mentioned that. You can hit submit and then that goes to our system.
Do you have a press release or something that is paper ready that would be put into the newspaper? Or something that we could release to citizens that let them know if you see something? You know, we encourage you to report it before we have structural fires or something, you know?
Absolutely.
Take this, we could put a little blurb in there and says, if you want to report fireworks, you could go to WWW blah, 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 blah. And people aren't really going to pay attention to that. But if you had something that went into the newspaper that people could actually see and look at it. Because I think all of us out here in the desert are kind of scared of fires.
Sure.
We've also forwarded that QR code to the cities.
Okay.
So I can forward that to.
That would be great.
Mr. Daniels. Yes, and spread it through your city website, the city social media, then we'll get it through the paper.
Thank you. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, once they are at the website, right on the front sheet, front page, you'll see, just to click fireworks reporter app. The QR code is nice too, because at, for instance, the fireworks booths, which there is one in needles. What we'll do is we pass a big stack of them out to the booth operators that has the QR code. A lot of people that use illegal fireworks either knowingly or unknowingly. They've bought the safe and sane and they'll use the illegal fireworks along with the same, safe and sane. We're trying to get the information out as best as possible. So we'll have the operators pass out a brochure with every sale. And then that just fans the word out even more about what the difference is between safe and sane, the ones that are labeled versus the illegal ones, which do start fires frequently. Yeah.
So we have a unique situation here where we border other states where we have, there's access to fireworks that are not allowed here.
Yes.
And then we have visitors that come here. And I think that many people do know the difference between legal and illegal, but I think many people don't. They think, well, it's for sale, so it's legal or it's 4th of July, so it should be legal as far as I'm concerned. I mean, they're thinking, not as far as I'm concerned.
Right, right.
But so that's, that's always, well, that's the something we deal with every day all year long. It's not, it's not just 4th of July. Those fireworks are for sale all the time and they're legal in that state.
Right.
It's not legal here and they go off in our town.
I'm sure they do. Yeah, especially like you said, close proximity to other states. I'd like to work with your public information officer, our public information officer, whoever we gotta, you know. Work to get the word out more in the city. And whether it's newspapers, social media, I think works pretty good. But if those in the community don't really, if that's not the best way to reach them, then we can find whatever the best way is to reach them. And probably it's occurring a lot, but it's just not being reported.
Right.
So if that's the case, yeah, we can make more of it. We could revisit that for sure.
Go ahead, Zach.
I just, I just want to say thank you to the local crews for attempting to save the Goffs General Store. Fighting fires in unincorporated areas with no water sources were high are really hard. I have fond memories of that building. Thank you all. That's all I had to say.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate all of you and the risk you take.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Before we leave this, I'd like to introduce Scott Tuttle, who's our battalion chief, doing a great job here. And then the world renowned, famous former battalion chief, Tom Marshall in the back. But.
Thank you. I think most of you have met me when I first promoted. Actually, it's assistant chief. I hate to correct you.
You're all chiefs to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the same. It's like the sheriff's department, like they have a different rank and I can't keep up with their ranks.
They all look the same.
My military friends, they have different ranks. I can't keep up with those. So I don't expect anybody to keep up with our ranks. But yeah, thank you for having us. Thank you for having our fire, office of the Fire Marshal today. Those guys, I'm really proud of the work they've been doing and they're doing this countywide and making a big difference. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I won't take any more. I'm glad to see all of you again. I'm obviously infinitely familiar with this town. I'll have Chief Tuttle and Chief Panos there work together and we'll get you a fire out. They can go out and you're water bill.
Thank you. Great.
Don't be a stranger.
Thank you so much.
Chief Marshall used to give us all kinds of stuff for free.
Oh, yeah.
I know.
Trucking all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
In the back.
All right. Public appearance. Person wishing to address the city council on subjects other than those scheduled or request to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to check a timing meeting, a three-minute timer per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. Amendments to the California Government Code, section 54950 prohibits city council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. With that, are there any public appearances? Seeing that. Hi, Jared.
Hey, Jared Johnson, 1320 Santa Fe Circle. Two things. Want to thank everybody that's been working really hard out there. I've been working on the 40. That's my office and I've been seeing every fire truck of every color from every region and area. So from big fires in Arizona, I've seen them coming this way because we've had a lot of wildfires off the 15, the 40. Even had lightning strikes in Essex out by me, starting fires. So a lot of thanks to those guys. You know, they're sweating there. You know what's up. Other thing too, I want to make sure that we're still addressing First Second Beach becoming parks. And the enforcement on that signage and whatever we need to do to try to get that taken care of. Just wanted to make sure that's still in the works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public appearance? Thing that will move on, number two has been withdrawn by staff. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. A three-minute timer per person has been established. All matters listed on consent calendar are considered to be routine. It will be enacted in one motion in the form listed. Mayor and any members of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled. On the consent count of three-minute timer per person applies recommended actions, approve items three through 13 on the consent calendar.
Your honor.
From a road to call vote.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull number seven.
Pull seven. That all? Anybody else want to pointy? Take a motion, everything except for seven?
I will make a motion to accept, except for seven.
Thank you. Motion saying like Kristen.
Sorry, I'm recognizing voices.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ellen.
And who's second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. If I come more often, I'll recognize voices.
It's all right.
Bring those snacks.
You look vaguely familiar.
Of course I did. Dr. Paget, did you vote?
Excuse me. Yes, my, my light's out here.
Sorry, we have all eyes, your honor. Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Paget?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longacre?
Yes.
All right. Number seven's way of the reading the adopt resolution for 2021-34, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2021-2022 funded by SB 1. Road Repair and Accountability Act 2017. Do you have something, Tim?
Yeah, the letter that we received from Ruth Munzer Lopez regarding the road that runs parallel to, between E and F up the road there. Grandview Road, I believe it is. Yes, Grandview Road. To the list.
Can I ask a question on that though?
Go ahead.
Rick, is that on the list of roads to be repaired already?
It's on the master list of all roads in the city and they're scheduled.
According to maintenance needs, correct? So.
It's an unpaved street, but SB 1 is the last increase in the gas tax and whatever. We get $90,000 a year of additional money for a street repair and maintenance. This list is, these are candidate streets. We're not obliged or we can do others, but they, we just need to turn in what we think at this time. It doesn't do any harm to, to add it or it's not essential to add it, nor does it do any harm, the request. Because we'll get to it on the schedule that you adopted.
Okay.
So it's already on?
It's on the schedule.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes.
We're not changing any schedule.
No.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, this street came up once already because of the severe and massive potholes on this street. We directed city, city, I don't know what the.
Public Works.
Public Works, that's the word I'm looking for, Public Works to go in and fill in the potholes because they were so bad. Because the trash truck has to go up there and turn around on this dirt street. So there, so those potholes get bigger every time they're driven on. And then when we have monsoon season and we have rain and wind, those potholes, they're going to be dug out again and we're going to be sending. We will be sending Public Works back up there again. I've been on this street. I don't go on it very often, but I've been on it. And I do recall that we've already addressed this problem once. So we might want to keep that in mind when we have the list that sometimes things have to be moved around and maybe this might have to be moved up.
Can I make a list?
Go ahead.
The problem is, is though there's many streets like that on our, on this list. So once we change them, this was done by a third party so that none of us are having, showing favoritisms to any street. This way it's done systematic according to a third party that came in and assessed every street. So that it's not, hey, this street should be done first because I live on it. No, we did this appropriately so that it's unbiased, so that we go through every street in the city of needles and we'll get them done. According to a master plan that was developed, not by any of us, but by a third party that assessed each street depending upon its need.
I agree.
I agree.
When, when the matter was brought up before our crews went out there and filled potholes. At, to this particular property owner's satisfaction, we monitor that street. And when it gets very problematic, we will, we'll regrade and fill the potholes. But in time, that street's going to need to be paved and it's on the schedule to do so. I can't tell you when. As I said, but I'll find out.
Your honor.
I'd like to stick to that schedule. Yeah.
When we do patch those, we're not just filling them with dirt, right? We're filling them with patch, this patch, I've seen them fill the holes on the overpass quite a bit. It's asphalt patch, correct?
Well, on this, because it's a dirt road.
It's an old asphalt road.
Yeah.
That doesn't exist anymore.
We do, we'll do asphalt patching. I think we did.
We did tailings.
Last time. Tailings. Tailings. We used tailings last time.
Awesome. Thank you.
But we'll, we'll keep it clear. Passable.
Okay.
There's another part to this sign, not a sign.
So it's going to stay on our master paving list.
Is it a dirt road that we're going to pave?
Well, eventually we'll get to it, but it's not, as I understand the council, you're not moving it up. It's just, we're going to take it in its sequence.
I've had to tell people who've come to me and ask, you know, your road's 10 years out. Well, hopefully get within five to six, if we keep going like we did this year, but so, yeah, I don't want to.
But we'll go out there and do the repairs. We'll go out there and make sure that road's comfortably passable.
Okay. We have a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Your honor, how do we address the second part of this letter? That we got? It has to be, it needs to be addressed, but I'm not, I don't know that it gets addressed in this.
Well, with, Mr. Mayor, the letter asks for a stop sign at Grandview and Down. We have to do our traffic, our speed study. And we'll have to have a traffic engineers report about whether the traffic warrants the stop sign.
But I have a question on that. And there's a visual obstruction, she says, so.
We can, we can remove visual obstruction.
I just want to know how we did that. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Isn't there, isn't this also on the list? We're going around for all the signs to be replaced?
Yes.
So, okay. So that is being addressed. This one is not a replacement. It's, it just doesn't exist or didn't have one. Oh, I see. She's asking for one and to remove the visual obstruction of the corner. For the children's safety on that street. That was just separate. I just wanted to ask that since it was ambiguous and I didn't know where we address it. Thank you.
Need a motion?
Good question. Oh.
Do you have a question?
No. I'll move to approve seven. I'll second it.
Motion saying call for the vote.
We have all eyes, your honor. Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Paget?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longacre?
Yeah.
All right. 14 is authorized city council members to attend the annual League of California Cities Conference scheduled for September 24th. Through the, or 22nd through the 24th in Sacramento, California and designate a voting delegate and alternate.
Mr. Mayor, we, the city clerk needs to know who plans to attend so she can get early registration. So by the end of this week, all right. July 16th up to July 16th, she can get the discounted rate, early bird special, I guess. And then she, the city clerk will make all the arrangements. So we just need to. To know who is going to attend and we'll make those reservations.
Tim would like to go. Chris didn't like to go. If I'm good, I'd like to go. Anybody else want to go?
I would like to go, but I have to clear it with my boss's schedule.
We know who runs that. Okay.
It's his vacation.
Well, if anybody changes their mind, just let us know.
Before July 16th.
Okay.
All right.
Who's the voting member?
Oh, yeah, we need to designate a voting delegate and alternative also, alternate. This is just until the end of the conference and then going into voting on some proposals and legislation they've already got. They want either back or not back.
I'll be a voting delegate.
Okay.
Not be the.
You want to be the alternate?
Sure, I'll be the alternate.
Because I'm not guaranteeing I'm going there. So I can't commit.
I voted enough.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion to that effect.
I will move that Tim be the voting delegate and Keston be the alternate.
I'll second that.
Call for the vote.
We have all eyes, your honor. Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Paget?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you. Consider canceling the second regular meetings of the city council MPA of July 27th and August 24th. This has been a standing fact. The council canceled the second meetings and during the summertime, a lot of people are on vacation or anything else, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Three months?
Yeah.
You already ended July.
September, if you want to add September, that's good too.
I don't know. Didn't we always have three months? Am I wrong?
Yeah, we usually do September.
We did the last two years.
I amend your month.
It was. Right now it's only.
It wasn't?
Normally it's three.
So how do we change?
So I know how to make, amend my motion.
Make it July, if you want.
September and then we could come back.
Always come back if we need to.
Okay. Then for, I make a motion to cancel the second session in July, August and September.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second any discussion? Open the vote.
My date is September 28th.
Councilor, you're going to vote?
Tim.
Tim. I hit the button.
Did you? Okay. We didn't light up. We have all eyes, your honor. Campbell?
Yes.
Terrell?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Paget?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
And Longacre?
Yes.
All right. City attorneys report. I have no report this evening, your honor. Thank you, John. City mag's report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm prepared. I've got written down. People have inquired about the. People have inquired about the project down by, on the river upstream from the bridge. They received their notice of violation, didn't do anything. They've received a second, a citation and a fine of fourteen hundred dollars and given ten days to cure. If nothing's done, they'll be issued a third citation. And then if nothing gets done, then they'll go to administrative hearing in front of the hearings officer, and then if nothing's done to court. We have two properties that have not been cleaned up despite citations. And the courts have issued receiverships, so they've assigned the property to a receiver to take over the property. One is five seventeen Palmway and the other is, I think it's five twelve Bazabuth, which was the, the side of the fatal fire with the two children. So we're going to get those resolved now. We are getting nine hundred and fifty dollars apiece for the golf carts of credit for the golf, for the golf carts that we're turning in. So the Little League and Prague softball have bought two at that price. The Little League one got stolen, their previous one, it was a private, was a private one. We're seeing a lot of interest now in that Pirates Cove power line. So we're going to be meeting with the takes on Thursday. I'll send a note out. We have volunteers removing weeds at Jack Smith between the picnic tables and the water. We've been notified that we'll be receiving one point one million in federal local fiscal recovery funds. Those can be used for the cost to respond to COVID, the negative impacts to, from COVID, the loss of revenue from COVID, premium paid to those who work through COVID and my favorite, water sewer and broadband infrastructure. So we're going to provide a list to you when we get that letter of authorization. Our energy efficient program, we were able to get two new high, highly efficient air conditioners to low and moderate income. I've hired a code enforcement officer, third code enforcement officer, fellow by name Moses Love. Once he starts, I'll bring him here and introduce him. Tomorrow, there's an LA Times reporter doing an article on the Needles water issues and why the state hasn't funded the well and the reservoir, the much needed improvements. Last Friday, there was a candlelight vigil for Robert Miller, who we found on the edge of the golf course, he was lost and the sheriffs had done a tremendous job trying to find him. And they put up a small cross down there. There was a back, the blue and red procession that went through town. On Saturday, last week, senior center dishwasher, one was, one was donating to a local business, eight thousand dollars. But it's a heavy duty industrial strength dishwasher and we're very grateful. Another, or the same company has, is vol, or is donating a shade structure for the south end of the pool to add some protection. Tesla is doing twelve charging stations around town. They're trying to figure out, they could put them all in one place. They're going to split them up between two or three different sites. But there's twelve, Tesla's going to locate twelve charging stations. And that's all I have.
Donating any Teslas?
Thank you.
Yeah, you got a test.
No, donating any.
Oh, well, I'm ready.
Counsel request. Let's do it again. Councilmember Longacre?
All right, I'm quick today. Federal government's going to restrict water usage on the lower Colorado River basin towards the end of summer. They're going to cut agriculture by twenty-five percent. That's water intake. So if you're a farmer, you're cutting twenty-five percent. With that being said, a lot of locals have reached out to me about this. I'd like us to do a PowerPoint presentation, pick one of the grows, show electrical and water consumption for the year and show our citizens what, what these places consume. It's not really a lot of water they consume. It's a lot of electricity, but I, I'd like that done. You, you could pick any one of the grows, preferably somebody that's been in town and working for a minute. So we have solid, solid company to use. And other than that, I hope our staff stays cool. It's been super hot. Have a good night.
You, John.
First, I'd like to thank all our city workers for everything they do. We always, again, give them any requests and they follow through with us and help us get them done. On that one, can we continue to try to continue with the parks? I know that's going to be brought up with the money, but I still want to stay on top of that. Because every year it seems like once this new activity of sport changes, we relook at the events and things haven't been changed on it. So the pool, if we can get seed for that overseed, so we can have grass nice for next pool season, have it done up, ready to go. And that with the parks, the same thing with first and second beach. All of our parks to try to stay on top of those is our next phase with the, with the park structures. And then I think that's it, actually.
Our goat heads over there.
There, it needs massive work. I haven't, I haven't tried.
Did you say goat heads? Oh, they're a problem.
Sticker. That's what we were going to last.
They're a problem.
We just wondered if it got handled.
It's kind of, it needs a lot of, it's going to need.
Going to have to go in and pull them out. They're all over my yard.
Okay, mine's, just one of the, can do something about my green light here.
Fix his light.
It's burned out.
Okay.
Lights on, nobody's on them.
Councilmember Merritt?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilmember Terrell?
Yeah, I want to thank all the crews that came out because we had people from pretty much every department. When telephone pole got torn down by a big rig on Ice Plant Road, they were out there until almost midnight working on it. And then when they were back out there the following morning, still tidying up the final stages of it. So I want to thank them. They put in a lot of hard work on it. It was very hot that day. And I want to thank the city for getting the cooling station set up at the rec center, or not the rec center, the senior center. And just everybody came together and worked very hard to, to do what needed to be done to get the power back on as quickly as possible. So I want to say thank you.
Ms. Ellen?
Hi, I, I would also like to thank everyone that was fast, quick, and that was miserable. I did get a few phone calls from people that live up there. They, they would like to know what we are going to do to stop the truck traffic up, up there. And I know that plans are in the way, but I did, I just want to report that I got the inquiries that trucks are driving around up in the Zamora Heights area, also between bashes and the gas station. The semi trucks are sometimes, they're two and sometimes three deep on one side of the street. I don't know if there is a place in town where truck drivers can actually stop. I know that they stop and eat at that restaurant. Maybe they can go somewhere else and call ahead of time and go over and pick it up. Or if that's the only place, I don't know who owns the empty lot next to Harris Motors or, but there's, you know, I go up there a lot. Going to my daughter's house and I see all the trucks on that street and the whole street is lined up and they're parked next to, next to each other, double parked. One day it was triple parked with just enough of room for one truck to go through. And then they go down to the end and they turn around in that dirt and come back out again. So it's just a complaint, two complaints that I got from that area. Like, what are you going to do about them knocking down our power poles? And I said, well, Ellen is not really going to do much of anything because I can't pick up power poles, but, but the city is working on it. So, and I do want to thank them because that was fast. I mean, it was, I saw the pictures, all the teams, the people, everyone that responded. And in that kind of heat, thank you so much for, for helping those people.
You're starting to sound like an elected official. I'm not going to do anything.
Yeah, yeah. I, I moved a telephone pole one time. It fell, it bashes. I, I mean, it's at Clay Pools. It felt, the man had a stroke, hit it and it fell on his car and I was pregnant. And I moved that power pole, that, that power light, the street light and opened the door to get the man out of the car.
And now you're like official, you're not going to do anything.
I can't listen.
All right, with that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
That's your.